Good morning. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of Middlesex Middle School Assistant Principal, Darien High School Assistant Principal, Royal Elementary School Assistant Principal, and Ox Ridge Elementary School Principal pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1206A. Julie, second by Katie. All those in favor? That is unanimous with all those present. Thank you. We are going to reconvene in public session. May I have a motion? Dave Brown, second by John Senior. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We are no longer going to livestream via this meeting. You can switch to YouTube if you want to watch the meeting. Unfortunately, someone Zoom bombed us, so we are going to switch off and you can watch the meeting on a go-forward basis on YouTube. So, thank you. We'll be livestreaming through YouTube. All right. Thank you, Michelle. So, we're off. Tell me that we're off.
We are on YouTube and recording right now.
Okay. But nobody can internet. All right, good. All right. So, let's go back to where we left off. Michelle, those four people entered the waiting room. They're going to have to realize they've got to get off because they're not going to be able to...
What has been told already?
All right, good.
We're good.
Good. Thank you. All right. Let me go back to the presentation.
Oh, right. I'm sorry.
Yeah. We'll let them know of the good news some other way. Good. All right. Good. Thank you all for that break and that unfortunate incident. So, all right.
I think we are on goal three.
I think we're finishing 2B, Dr. Ali. Sorry.
I thought we had finished 2B.
I was saying that I was looking for some language that makes it sound like something will happen by the end. This is years three to five. We're talking about developing plans.
So...
That's... Go ahead.
No, no. I appreciate that, Julie, again, for further board discussion, but I think it's important to have something in there about implementation and moving it forward. But I also, and Dr. Fedigan, I don't know where you are on this, but I would appreciate, again, outside eyes looking at the work we've done and the recommendations that are being brought forward. I would rather take a little bit of time to hear any thoughts you have, you know, based on work that you've done, based on all the work that's been done here in the district. So, but I am okay with realizing that at some point in time, there's got to be some implementation of the prioritization.
Right. I don't know what exactly is being implemented. That would be cart before the horse, for sure.
Well, and maybe we put for potential implementation.
Right. Or goal, or aiming to implement.
Would you like me to make the changes that were suggested and just leave year three as that to review?
That would help. That would definitely help.
Yeah. And we know that at the end of the day, it's got to be implemented. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Moving along. 3A.
3A just reflects the change to vision of the graduate. There were a couple of portraits left and we're highlighting where we made those changes.
Anything with 3A?
And I think 4 was changed specifically, but 3B. Yes, there were 3B. We explore assessments for monitoring the performance of the...
Can we just move to 3B?
Vision of the graduate, 3B.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure you're busy with that. Yep.
Great.
Just keep going down, please, Michelle.
Up a little bit, just so we have all of 3B in view.
I can't put it on.
Oh, it's not the way it's set up?
Okay.
That was the same.
Okay.
Yes. So, you can see the explore, the monitoring systems. I said explore because I don't want to overcommit to that one because it's... There's a lot of work involved in that one. So, I explicitly use that word, but it's not that I'm going to do anything, but I just can't commit to actually making up all of those assessments.
Jill?
I get that, but we're already midway through an implementation. So, we do need some measures for what we consider success at this stage.
Well, we have under the measures there something. I'll call them. It's not that we don't have any, that we will bring back samples of what we're talking about.
Katie?
Just clarification that these are for all grade levels?
Yes.
Should we make that clearer here?
I think it's helpful just sometimes since we have such a wide range.
Yeah, maybe add that K through 12, Alan. Jill, your continue your thought process there.
Yeah. Again, I think in that measures app column, Alan, I think I would just like to see a little bit more. I think it's a very important initiative, and I know we're trying to keep it fairly high level, but assessment and monitoring is critical. And I assume that we did have some preliminary assessment and monitoring structures in place. So, whatever we have in place, I'd like to see some of that data. And then I get that we're attempting to expand it.
I think you would have some understanding of what those multiple measures are, right? In the parentheses. So, I'd like to see that expanded. What are those? And they may change over time, but what are those multiple measures you're thinking about?
My point is, I actually don't know. If we have measures now, they're aligned coincidentally. I honestly don't have... I can't go to the positivity of assessments that are aligned to... We may have examples here and there, but I can't go to... I can't pull those up. That's what this is trying to do, to try and develop some of those.
This actually sounds like a similar issue to 2B and the last one, you know, just in terms of that it's going to take multiple years. So, maybe there's just a way to differentiate that the first step, and then there's more to come.
That's a good point. And then it's even then, then make it very clear that out of this, measures will be developed in year... End of year three or year four. I think too, and, you know, give me some guidance here from your professional end to it, but I think, you know, as you think about embedding curriculum assessments, you know, I would think you would have some idea of measurements you would want. Like, how do you get to this point and go through the process without thinking about the outcomes? And those outcomes would be the measurements. So, that's where I worry, me, my word, that you're not sure of the measurements. I think that has to be part of the process.
Measurements are... We do have measurements and assessments for students. Obviously, like, what's into development of the vision of the graduates and the attributes that are in there? We don't have... We certainly have. It's not as if we don't try for students to be creative and so on and so forth, but that would be aligning the ones that we have to that. And then there's other ones that we're going to have to develop right further for ones that we don't have.
Julie?
Does that make sense?
And I would... I'd say, again, this is that territory where it's so much harder to dimensionalize what success and achievement looks like when you move away from the things that you can't measure as easily with numbers or with our traditional models. I don't know if there's an opportunity to tie this highlighted point about explore assessment and monitoring to the point above it, which is collecting data from recent graduates and understanding their take, because tracking that year after year might help us understand any shifts in how those students are reporting back on their preparedness and satisfaction post-graduation, while we also figure out the highlighted point and what those components look like.
Amy, you'll be the one who is overseeing.
Do you understand where we're coming from, Amy?
Yeah, I do. One of the things I would like us to continue to consider is that it should be actually PK 12, not even really just kindergarten, because we're a PK district. I think there's a real opportunity here to engage the staff and the curricula that already exists. So, some of the work that's happening with migrating current units of study, like lowercase ones, not from TC, and district units of study, and crosswalking that with the vision of the graduate to see what already exists. What are we already asking children to do that allow them to demonstrate those competencies and attributes of vision of the graduate? And I agree, you know, standardized measures are... They're one type of measure, but they're not necessarily the most indicative of future of post-secondary success. So, I think there's really an opportunity here to be innovative and talk to people, you know, in different industries and recent graduates about, you know, what will be the most helpful experiences for our students to have along the continuum of pre-K 12? And I think there's also a real opportunity here to have some articulation pre-K 12 for career exploration as well. Like, that shouldn't just start in sixth grade, 612. It should continue all the way through.
Some of it plays into the conversation earlier in that, looking at our graduate statistics, what else are these students doing or how else do we need to support them? There are students that look to or go through the process of getting appointed to the armed services. There are students that, you know, really, you know, would like the opportunity to look at trade schools. So...
Yeah. And it's too late to offer those experiences with internship, which typically happens, you know, after the AP exam. So, it has to be a real thoughtful integration of that, recognizing the different pathways our children can have that will help them reach success.
Good. Dave?
I'm not certain that this goes here, but I'm going to throw it out and see what people think. In terms of exploring assessments and monitoring systems for student performance, I don't see how we're measuring in sort of teacher performance and how effectiveness and how that's really tracked into here. And that's always been a longstanding concern of mine with the vision of the graduate is some of these competencies. I don't know how you demonstrate they're being taught by teachers and how we measure that. So, I don't know if that's a component we need to think about being able to evaluate as we look at this new language.
So, Amy, how do you... How do you... And I turn to you because you're like fresh eyes looking at this from all our conversations. So, we appreciate it. But, you know, Dave brings up a good point. You know, earlier Jessica gave us an update on evaluations. I think, you know, everyone struggles with evaluations, but, you know, we want to see how what the teachers are doing ties into how the students are performing and, you know, how do we put that together, so to speak?
So, of course, I want to continue to calibrate more with my team here and with all of you and certainly the folks out in schools. But when we're looking at the strategic plan and there are the seven goals, they can't be looked at in a siloed or isolated way. So, I would say goal four is a prime, when we're talking about growing the capacity of staff, is a prime opportunity for us to maybe, while we're working through this multi-year plan, re-envision and reimagine how we provide support and professional learning to not only teachers, but to our administrators, the Board of Ed, certainly, but the cabinet as well. And Dr. Ali referenced before that the values are really... They're not just for students, right, or our teachers. Those are values that we all have to adhere to, not have to. It should be something that we're called to do so that we can reach the highest pinnacle of success as a school system. So, I think that there's an opportunity when we're thinking about the capacity of staff and aligning the vision of the graduate work to really the vision of a Darien Public Schools educator or employee is probably not the right word. But I'm looking really forward to engaging with Marge, and I've talked with her initially about some opportunities, for example, with how we recruit and interview staff. Even the questions that we ask staff when we're hiring them should provide us some level of information about how they would react and respond to our vision of the graduate. I was just going to say, our... I, Darien, I have to get to the... All of the right language. I think it's called here New Teacher Academy?
Well, we don't have an academy right now.
But a New Teacher Orientation. I think that's another example, again, of how do you onboard to vision of the graduate for the adult learner in the setting? Because those have to be parallel tracks. Does that help to clarify a little bit?
Can I just add one thing? Because maybe... So, as we revise our teacher evaluation plan two, we'll make sure to embed, you know, references to the things that are important to us, including vision of the graduate.
The teacher evaluation plan and also the plans that we work with the administration and teachers for, you know, school improvement, teaching school plans.
I guess the question, what I was more thinking, just to give us very simple and probably not overly accurate example to try and make the point, is that there's an objective in second grade, you have to learn how to do addition. If we have everybody in a class with a teacher who's a math teacher and nobody learns how to do addition by the end of the year, we kind of know they probably weren't doing a great job teaching addition. With some of the competencies that we have, they're very subjective and very vague. We know that that was taught by a teacher. How do we know that didn't come from a parent or a grandparent or somebody else? And so, that's the question is being able to evaluate performance of staff in hitting those goals and hitting those objectives. And how do we measure that? It's really what I'm more interested in, if that was clarifying.
I think a combination of what has been said there. The vehicle, one of the vehicles for is to... The learning principles that we value and the portrait of the graduate, those attributes for staff would be reflected in the teacher, a new teacher evaluation plan, which is the same as this in terms of having a vehicle, having a measurement, having a housing for that. Those would be the traits that we would want the teachers to be teaching.
I guess, is it the Glaucon's quote? I'll get this wrong, dude, that, you know, it gets measured, gets improved, it gets implemented. So, yeah. So, that's really just...
Yeah, what can's matter?
I understand it's a vision, but I just want to make sure there's tracking. We can actually go back and have some metrics and have some oversight is really what I'm looking to make sure.
Yeah, that's a valid point because you need to have some coherence to all these things or else they don't tie together. I mean, it's no point trying to do these things for our kids if we're not actually teaching to them. That's right.
I think it's a great conversation, and I think there's a balance of metrics, you know, to, you know, the overall graduation rate, where these kids are going and stuff like that. There's such a component of what the teachers teach, and then there's such a component of the amount of time that tutors spend with these students after school hours, you know, and that reinforcement that the parents spend a lot of time and money around in this district too. So, but I think, you know, what the board is interested in seeing is how do you tie the teacher's performance to the performance of the student? And how do we take and tie those together? It's like the ongoing conversation we have that we're still not there yet, but, you know, all this technology we've invested in personally, I still not sure how all that technology ties into the curriculum each day, because you hear so many stories of who uses it, who doesn't use it, who brings a device, who doesn't bring a device. So, it's all that ticking and tying together so that we see the continuous outcome, the improvement. So, that's kind of, I think, the thought process. Good. Thank you. Where are we? 3C?
So, 3C. I think there's a typo there actually says to include the values. That may be the competencies of the vision of the graduate, I think, as opposed to the values. So, that's... You can see what's added in here. I don't need to read it. You can sort of read it yourself. There was the whole discussion primarily around the transition programs for students and expanding a little bit on that. That's the bottom one. And then the other one was sort of like the competencies of the vision of the graduate, developing that in the actual curriculum review process in terms of edupement and so on.
So, tell me if I'm Jill especially or Shirley, if I'm going off the rails here, but we've talked about, and I think you're going to come back to us, Shirley, with us looking at what do we need to do from a tradition... Excuse me. A transition standpoint with students in our special needs program. New Canaan has kind of more of a defined transition program with programs that are available at Fairfield, Mercy, and stuff like that. So, is that something... Is that something that needs to fit in here? Or do we look at that when you provide us an update on that?
So, it was to be the latter part, to provide update. But if I may take this opportunity just because in the context of it. And I realized last time when you had asked that question of New Canaan has a program and what... And I realized, I'll use plurals because I want to speak to some of the programs we've had over the years, just again, just to give you some context, and then talk about our plan, years three, four, and five. And so, I want to use plurals. So, it may have been one student or two students or three students who've been in these programs, but to not identify any students, just to talk about what we've had. So, we have, and you're going to look at it from DLC through ALC through the high school. So, please look at it, look at it from K through 12. I won't go pre-K through 12 because we haven't yet to do that, but we are looking at it. And, you know, when we began our program, just to give you an idea of some of the programs our students have participated, are participating in, you know, back eight years ago, we had four students in our high school Excel program. We have either 14 or 15 next year. And they happen at different levels. So, our incoming ninth graders have a different skill level than our 10th graders or 11th grader, 12th graders. And as you know, and I think you said earlier, all this pathway training has to begin in elementary school, and we're mindful of that. And we do begin a lot of... We have our internal programs in middlesex of our coffee carts and our different activities for students. In our high school, we have hands-on activities in school. But I just want to give you some context of what we've had over the years. We've had students in the Rise program at Sacred Heart. We've had students in Chapel Haven. We have had students in our program over at Cedarhurst, which allows not only for college attendance, we have 12 kids, Cedarhurst is affiliated with Yale, but allows students to go to either Southern or Gateway or different programs as well. We've had students in the Norwalk Community College program as well. And the way we've designed our transition programs are based on the students' individual pathway, but they're working toward what they wish to do. We currently have students in our programs who are working at, in concert with Ableist over the Y. They work in the cafe over the Y. They're working at Reynolds Farm. They were at, I call it friends to friends, but I think it's person to person. I think it's person to person. And looking at our students, we really start designing it that early on. So, I don't want you to think that it's not that we couldn't have a program in-house. It's just that the steps that our students take happen at different intervals of time. And this is probably one of the first times that we do have many students in the same cohort, because we have such a larger group of students. When we had four students, they were very varied, but now we have 14 or 15, depending on the program next year. So, what we would like to do, and we also have students who have worked in our internal program in NLP as well. We've had students who participate in that too. So, I think what we'd like to do, one, we realize we're probably not sharing that in the form of it. So, that will be part of our program, because it's not that we're not, but how would you know of all these exciting opportunities for students? What we would like to do, though, is start just to look at years three, four, and five to really begin with a steering committee. You know, we've already brought in Mancy Portis, who's been wonderful, who really helps with mapping and transition planning. We'd like her to be on our steering committee. We'd like to have our Director of Guidance on our steering committee when we're looking at post-secondary colleges and different programs. We'd like to have at least one of the APs from the high school on the steering committee. We'd like to have Jean Arne, the chairperson of the committee. We'd like to have, of course, Scott will be there, and some other members, including one student member also. We do need a student voice as well. And in our agency relationships, because we do have relationships with Rise, with Ableist, with Sacred Heart, Jody, I think have at least when appropriate, have them come and be part of the process. They won't be at every steering committee, but they'll be part of that process. Then I think we can look at our cohort of students, of 14 to 15 students, and look at planning from grades nine through 12 and looking at 22 up to ages 22, and also start to do a nexus between middle school and planning starting in our sixth grade year. So, that's what we're looking at. Our first year will be developing the steering committee, getting this together, starting it, setting goals for the committee, identifying cohort needs without specifically mentioning students. We won't share that, but we'll share just different needs of what the cohort looks like, plan on winter time or beginning after January, touring different programs. We've also had a student in the New Canaan program, some students in the New Canaan program in the past as well. Start looking at some of those programs. We always go to a site where students place. We've been to Chapel Haven. We've been to Rise. We never recommend a program that one of us have not been to or visited, but we remember shared that with you. So, how would you know what these programs look like? We'll have that in our presentation. So, that's our thinking of visitations. And then by the end of next year, the first year of our steering committee, be able to report out in spring about our...
I appreciate that, Shirley. Kind of very in-depth, just you describing it, which is good. I think a lot of folks here might have been educated, which is good. I think it goes back to communication, to your point. And I think that overall structure makes a lot of sense to me. I just go back to, I think it's two years now where there was an instructional meeting or an informational meeting at the high school, and I think you're going to do another one of those. And I think that that's really important from a community standpoint. That meeting was well done. I mean, there's a lot of components to this from, you know, the Husky program, insurance, I mean, all that type of stuff. So, you know...
And that would be...
Yep, yep.
We did actually have Dr. Portis here this year also. Several families attended also, but really spoke about transition, about, actually, a lot of it was about guardianship.
Yep. Good. Thank you. Jill?
Just the way this is written, from what you described, I think we're taking a more strategic look at how the transition program works. And so, I think the language here in the action needs to reflect, because I would agree that design transition programs and community opportunities based on student need is part of it, but I think we're rolling it up a level first. So, I just would ask you to just look at that language, please.
Okay.
Like, and I'd like to see, for example, the steering committee show up in the measures column.
Okay. And I'll put some of the attributes I just spoke about for next...
That would be great. Thank you, Shirley. Katie?
Thank you. I agree that I think there's some refinement that this could use. One, I would say that I think there's two components of timing that are important, one being that transition planning is not something that should be left until the end. So, I think it's important to know what our timeline is on that from a student perspective, you know, ideally in middle school. I also would just want to caution, I think Dr. Fedigan referenced this earlier in an unrelated conversation, that while we want to be thoughtful and take time to develop programs, we also need to be conscious of the cohorts of students that might be caught in our planning and not being addressed. So, it's just very important to remember that we have current students we need to handle as well as lofty ideals for future students. And then my third and final point is that I would also say that I think that we are missing a cohort of students in this subset goal, and it would be the students who belong in transition planning, maybe more than programming. So, our conversation has kind of started at the beginning that reads more of a gen ed conversation and then into a very specialized program. And I think that it's important to think about how we develop some of those planning, again, very importantly in middle school, for students who have IEPs and 504s so that they can develop that independence and that advocacy that we talked about earlier being so important to, you know, to these high school students who very quickly become adults in their own lives.
Good. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Cheryl. Good. All right, Amy, you got all that?
I did.
Always. Good. All right. So, we're good to move on from 3C?
So, go forward. We're expanding the professional capacity of the staff. And we had some discussions about that earlier on today. So, there's two particular changes that were added here. We're looking to implement an aspiring leader academy that would give opportunities for up-and-coming staff members to learn about leadership, prepare them for the next level of leadership. Potentially, what will we discuss at other board meetings and today in terms of department charge? I'm not necessarily meaning that, but that may be another thing to actually add in here to provide those experiences to those professionals too. So, we could add that in as well. And there's a little bit of a missed word here. So, it's explore a systemic mentor program for staff new to Darien, new to the profession. So, let's tidy that up. So, whether we wanted to officially put in to provide those other opportunities for staff, happy to...
Jill, I mean, other... Alan, what are you referring to when we talked?
I'm referring to like people at middle, middle level management, like department charge, right? Trying to give them experiences, other experiences that prepare them to...
Yes, I'd like to see that here. I think recruitment and retention absolutely is a strategic focus of the district, and it's a big one. So, I would absolutely like to see the work that we're planning to do reflected in the plan, in the strategic plan.
Can we... It's a play on words, but instead of explore systemic mentor program, can we just say develop mentor program? I think we've defined that we needed.
So, we may need to negotiate the impact of that. So, that's why we said explore.
Fair enough. Thank you, Marge, for keeping us on track there. Katie?
Just a clarification that the Aspiring Leader Academy is an existing program that we would be bringing people to, but the mentor program would be an initiative that we're developing in-house. Is that right?
Both of you do.
So, the Aspiring Leader Academy is something in-house as well. It's not an existing program?
Correct.
Okay.
And Marge, to your point earlier, implement Aspiring Leader Academy has nothing to do contractually with...
So, I'm assuming that that would be voluntary. So, we wouldn't need...
Okay. But I think we do need a, and, you know, I think we should work with the teachers and the administrators on it. We need... We need a very defined mentor program. And I think of the people coming into the district and we talk about career pathing and building bench strength. I think that's, that's important. Katie?
So just a question on timing then, there are quite a few measures spanning years three to five. What, what's the thought on when the board might see a, a presentation on the initiatives, just from a timeline respect?
Probably defer to say, can I just go back to the team and kind of line that out for you?
I think Katie, you bring up a good point. I think in all of these things, we need to understand when you're coming back to the board. I reference all the good work, hard work and a lot of work that was done on DEI. But we weren't kind of brought along the way and then got a big presentation on DEI toward the end there. So I think some incremental updates as we go through the process and have that built in. Whether it's in the timeline, I would say it's probably in the timeline.
Yeah, even just understanding if we could expect to hear something within the next year.
No, I would change this. I'll change this to reflect what you can expect to hear and have the change made for that for next week, for our next meeting.
Good.
I would say too, by the way, we, Dave, we didn't ignore the concept of a camp chart, right? If, if, if the board, is that something that they would want to see? It just takes a little bit longer to like change this into that, right? But if you want to translate, transition that into that, that, you know.
I think the one, the one way I look at this, and Dave chime in here, because I understand your concept of the camp, camp chart. But there, again, it's somewhat exhausting, all the stuff we're talking about here. How do you execute up, up and above your, your normal day job here? So I look at it from, what do you need from us to execute on this? And the only way to know that is to continuously get updates, you know, back to the board in terms of, do you have the resources? Whether it's technology, whether it's staffing, whether it's outside resources, you know? I think you should know that in order to execute on this type of stuff, that we need to understand that. Like, what are the resources that are needed to execute upon it? And, and I think we're here to help that, whether it's with, you know, the checkbook or, or, or what. But I think that's, you know, my favorite phrase, all this stuff starts to give me ajuda. As to, as to how do you execute on it all and then continue to stay focused on the student day in and day out? And how do we make sure Amy doesn't like run up the road to Milford by all the stuff we have going on? So those are my thoughts. Jill?
I'd like to see a third action. And I think the third, I'm going to add to it based on what you said. No, I actually just want to reorganize a little bit. I, I think explicitly, we're looking to develop talent within the district and to provide opportunities. You, Marge, you can please re-language me. But we're looking to, you know, create internal opportunities for staff. And so I think the aspiring leader academy, the systemic mentor program, the, what we talked about with opportunities for department chairs, that all goes to growing staff within the district. I'd like to call it out explicitly because I think it is an explicit area of work and an important focus.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I like up top, it says support teacher retention. And I think in, in giving a shout out to the, the teachers and, and helping them feel like, understand what we're focused on, increase opportunities for teacher voice and professional learning. But somewhere built in there, teacher retention, it's, it's great to retain teachers, but work with teachers on career development, career advancement, I think that's an important bullet. I summarize, for once, I summarize what Jill said.
Thank you. Thank you, Duke.
All right. Good. Anything else, folks? All right. We'll move on to.
So the next, yes, the next one is, this is an area where Sir Brian may add in the portrait of the graduate skills and competencies. So it talks about revise a teacher evaluation plan to align the new state requirements while promoting high quality teaching and learning practices. To be our learning principles, we could put in there portraits of graduate skills and competencies. And I mean, that's, that's where we would, that's a system that gets measured, that's a system that is high stakes and aligns to perfectly what we're trying to do with our students.
Julie?
Didn't we hear in the legislative update that the state guidelines for the new.
We have all that, we have all that.
They're due next July, but we have it all already.
No, we're, we're ahead of like the guidelines and we know the format we gotta do. We got, that's good work this year.
Okay, great. That's awesome.
Anyone else?
I will say just that second one, the ensure regular opportunities. This is an opportunity to sit down, central services, Marge, with union and administration to make sure we're, we are doing what we say we're doing with this new program. Where we're doing all our measurements, our feedback is timely, so on and so forth. So that's, that's an accountability measurement built in.
So the only thing I would add there in the lengthy update and conversations we've had about department chairs. And here, Amy, I'll, I'll include you in this conversation again, a fresh set of eyes. So regular and timely feedback monitored and reviewed by union administration. Here's where I think I'd like to see defined the role of these department chairs. All right. I hear mixed reviews on where principals see department chairs in terms of providing feedback to teachers, where teachers feel they get feedback from. I think I've talked previously about an org chart and an org chart can have some solid lines and dotted lines. But you know, if you're going to continue to build out the department chair role and look to continue to define that and refine it, like what role do they play in, in feedback and sitting in a classroom and giving immediate feedback to a teacher? Like, and how does that work in conjunction with the principal, with the assistant principal? Like, how is all that coordinated?
To that action. Oh, sorry, sorry.
And you may say, thank you. I'm gonna look into all of it and I'm, I'm fine with that. But I, we've had extensive conversations about department chairs and there's still a lot of gray areas around department chairs. And, you know, I think it's a valuable role, but I think we need to continue to define it and refine it. That makes sense. And in the mean language, but I see an opportunity here. You know, we've invested in a lot of administrative level folks and we talk about revising the teacher plan, pursuing professional learning, ensuring regular opportunities, regular and timely feedback. Like, what does that look like? How does the assistant principal do that? How does the principal do that? How does the department chair do that? I need to see that, you know, how that works.
So I can appreciate the question and the phrase opportunity and also the grace of time to get my feet on the ground a little bit more than everybody. But one of the things that I would think would be really critical in clarifying the role of the department chairs and the building administrators and teachers and how they all interface and interplay is, you know, the school district with five elementary schools. Julie's role in, in my work with Julie and the building principals and assistant principals is essential to bring coherence across the district and continue to maintain focus to the strategic plan. And I think that obviously is similarly, when you think about the secondary level, having the middle school and the high school and then six, twelve articulation. The department chairs can really play a very critical role in that. But I have been sitting down with folks, I wouldn't say entry interviews, but entry conversations and trying to really gather some data around how things work here and who does, who does what and how to really be efficient and highly effective with the resources that we have, including personnel. So I'll look forward to exploring that more with the team and coming back to the board.
I think we have like, you know, to be honest, I get a lot of feedback from across the district and I, I want to move. I feel there's a, there's the silo of the principals and the assistant principals. There's a silo of the teachers. There's the silo of the department chairs. Let's break down the silos. How do they all work together for the benefit of each other and in ultimate for the benefit of our students? So.
I think part of that is our, our team working together to create the conditions for that. And that's how you, that's how you do a systemic lift, like something, the vision of the graduate is years of work. And that will require, again, that's a PK twelve across departments and across varying roles.
Can I just?
Yes.
And I, I want to give Amy the time to get to know our system. But we do have, as far as feedback and evaluation of teachers, everyone knows their role and everyone is involved. I might suggest, and Barry Palmer, don't text me, that teachers don't often like to hear the feedback. And so that's why they think they may not be getting good feedback. But I welcome Amy to look at what we have, but I don't think it's accurate to say that they're, they may be in silos for other things, but everybody's involved in the supervision and evaluation of teachers.
I, I appreciate that. My feedback that I hear regularly is people don't understand roles and responsibilities. And so while the feedback may be going to your point of, does the teacher take the feedback seriously? I'll just say it, you know, do they understand the role of that department chair versus the role of the principal or the assistant principal? I think it would just help is we, I want to continue to support that role. But, you know, I think we need to see more definition around it. I'll leave it at that. Any other?
Are you okay? Because what that does is, is holding those people you're talking about, a kind of all, all of ourselves for actually doing it.
Any changes up here? Okay, let's keep moving.
I think this is, yeah, this is what I just said about Mr. Brown's suggestion, that in terms of teaching and learning practices incorporate their, the competencies or skills of the graduate.
A C, four C.
Four, C, four C. I don't have any changes there.
Do we have to change language to match the new legislation, minority teacher recruitment? It's supposed to be something else now, right?
Is there some diversity here?
Oh.
I'll look at.
So have that as a takeaway. Anything on four D? This cut, the four D kind of cuts across a couple of other things we spoke to, too. Okay.
The only change in.
Five A?
Five A, actually, sorry, I apologize for not catching that. That's poorly worded. What I'm trying to say there in five A is explore how staff may best support communication. So that may be exploring the use of staff internal here or conservative, do I need additional staff for communications? It's just opening that door up. I'm just flagging it. I don't have a particular plan, but it's just how best to deploy staff to support communication. That's what they should say.
I'd support that change. You know, there, it could be that you need resources. It could be that you just need to redeploy staff. I think we're in too early. So I, I appreciate broadening, I would broaden to resources. They could be human, they could be otherwise, it could be a combo.
Yeah.
Good. Yes, so, sorry, Katie.
I would just say that I think that, that this goal of five and communication is a good one to thread back through the other ones as well. I think that we can benefit from looking at how communication can become a part of all of those. Specifically in our most recent conversation with staff and teacher feedback, a lot of that probably comes down to communication.
Next page, five B.
Five B was simply being explicit if I asked in our school discussion.
Yes, David.
I just noticed this, this looks redundant. Seven B, I just wasn't sure where.
Where are you at?
I'm sorry, seven A, the value of Ford's technology platform, Aspen. I just didn't work.
Where is it, David?
It's also in seven A.
Yeah.
I think, I think the one's in seven A.
Yeah. Good, good pickup. Thanks, David. All right. Okay, so we're on to six.
Yes, I just flagged that. I didn't have any in that first page.
Second page.
It's just really reviewing the grounds, keeping neat of, of the various elementary schools from Oxford Ridge to the other elementary.
Rich, I know you, I know you do this real quick, but just, you know, I want you to continue. I think it's good to continue to look at that with respect to outsourcing. You know, I know we do some outsourcing around that, but.
We do some. I mean, we have limited language in terms of what we can and can't do.
No, absolutely. And I don't want to upset the apple cart. We've got a great team that does a great job. But, you know, it's always about what are the efficiencies to do it? And, you know, we'll have a lot of new schools and renovated schools. So that, that should play into helping us overall.
Mr. Chairman, can you just, can I just note something there? Even though we, we checked this a hundred times, that yellow should have moved right up to the two other toppings right there. The conductor architectural study to value of middle sex. And that's saying we have to do that. I'm just noting that would be a decision.
Recommendation. Okay, that's fine. Yes, sorry, Katie.
So I would actually, just on that one with the architectural study for middle sex, I know it came up earlier. And given this, the building projects that we're doing, maybe we're not looking to redo the full district right now. However, I think the middle sex facility has a lot of concerns and I would, I would caution us putting that off. And I wonder if that shouldn't be a more immediate goal for year three.
Rich, you're, while we're at the table, your thoughts on, so there's no money, high, high level is to, might not be able to do it this year.
So yeah, there, there's no money in the budget to do it this year and you don't have the bandwidth to do it this year. KGND, which is an architect that does a lot of these studies, is not going to do it for us this year, given their commitment to HHR. Put it good any early, it's just not going to be feasible.
And just at a high level, because, you know, Katie's got a valid point, but what, what's the cost associated with another?
So if it's just the middle school, it'll probably be around fifty thousand dollars and it would be something you'd see in the operating budget for the following.
Okay.
So just curious, thank you. I'm just curious about the, the bandwidth question. It's not an internal.
Oh, there's a significant amount of internal.
But I'm just saying, we would be hiring someone to do it and.
You would, who then spends the majority of their time following around, speaking to internal staff.
Yeah, we talked about it in facilities that.
I know, I was there. I just would say that I think that, I think that we need to recognize the costs of putting things off. And I would argue that we find ourselves in that situation currently due to.
Good, good points. Rich, just so everything's on the table here, you, you would, this is something you would put out to bid?
We would have to put it out to bid, given the price.
And so there are other folks out there. We're comfortable with KGND as they did the last one. They did a good job.
I mean, so film firms like Silver Petricelli would do it, right? Tom Architects would do it, Northeast Collaborative would do it. So every time we've done a study like this, whether it was with Northeast to do portables, the time commitment for staff is significant.
No.
Same when KGND was doing ten-year study and KGND, Northeast Collaborative looked at portables. It's not just hiring a consultant. It's all kind of runs off.
Understood. And so just, just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, your staff is busy now with HHR.
Correct.
And, and so the focus.
And can I just ask, just to, to Katie's point about when you put things off, then you create bigger problems for yourselves? Am I right in thinking also that part of our problem is back in the day, we did everything at the same time? And then everything came on, came back to needing attention on the same schedule, which.
Yeah, it's, it's good, you know, I appreciate what you put on the table there. I think, you know, having gone back to that original plan when I was on the board early, I mean, the time I've been on the board, that we, I mean, we took that plan and we are where we are because of that plan. Oxford Ridge is almost built, HHR is on the way.
I mean, before the 2015 plan, I'm talking about when the last round of renovations were done to our elementary schools, for example. Like, all the schools came to need attention basically at the same time and, and we may be.
Back there again.
Right. Well, and to not build that for ourselves again, as much as I recognize middle school needs attention.
I think also that I don't have a sense of the board has actually, you know, officially said that we're going to go in this direction. So getting that alone on the table at some point here will be very helpful and expedite and encourage people and address a lot. So it's really closing that circle. First of all, is that something we're going to do or is that something we're going to do? Cause that, that, that.
So to your, so to your point, go ahead, Katie, let you finish.
Thank you. I would just say that, you know, to, to the point of bandwidth, to the point of where the board wants to go. I would just say to Rich, what I know that the board has said to Shirley many times is if you need something, let us know. If you need more staff, you know, like we have to have good facilities to support good education. So if we have a shortage, let's address that.
But I guess we haven't, go ahead, John.
We haven't determined that, like, we haven't even brought it to facilities to get sniffed at right now. We're hearing elementary enrollment numbers are coming in lower than expected. So like, I think I, I get the point, but we also get into trouble when we rush into things. We gotta be thoughtful, methodical, especially on the cusp of HHR, which yes, I mean, it, it got put off. I'm not trying to make the same mistake, guys and ladies. But I also am very concerned about putting too much on the shoulders of staff, putting too much on the shoulders of the board. You know, so I just want to be methodical. Yeah, so I just want to be methodical, not pushing out. I mean, we're talking about the next fiscal year budget, right? So 25 versus 24, and that's kind of where I stay.
I would just say that the, this, these things take so long, right? I mean, I think I, I started having a conversation about Ox Ridge, you know, probably eight, nine years ago, right? And, and we're still under construction. So I think that, I think that had recognizing that there are issues at the middle school building is, is being thoughtful to say, let's get that study done. Because we know that the building is only going to experience more wear and tear and deterioration in a year. So I see the study as, as being thoughtful in us looking forward.
So I appreciate the conversation. I would say my thought process on it is, and I think the point has come out a couple of places. Until, this is me personally, until I understand what the administration's goals are with that building. There's stuff that we need to do from a capital standpoint. There's normal maintenance overall, that building is in good shape. That's the continued feedback we get. So I don't disagree with you, Katie, but I don't want to put the cart before the horse to John's point. And until the administration comes back with us to us and says like, look, here's what we want to do with the middle school in terms of teams or no teams, or here's why we want to put an addition on. Or here's why we want to change the circulation up at the middle school. And, and then I think now, just based on information we heard this morning and a better understanding of the population that's going to go through there. So I think as a board, we can have that discussion about what we want from the administration to enable us to make that decision or talk more about getting the funding or agreeing to move that study forward. But I think I, we need to see some work from the administration first. Does that make sense? And you'll let us know when you're, you know, where you're at with that.
Yeah, we're ready to, we'll be ready to at least have that discussion because I'd like to at least move that discussion forward. Where it gets slatted in is a different.
Okay.
One quick follow up. Rich, you had mentioned that the middle school will need a new roof or significant roof work. What year do we?
So we're looking at four to five years out, same with.
Okay, so I, I mean, it would make sense to make sure we're having.
In an ideal situation, you have a study done, the study would flag the roof. And then obviously after HHR is done, that's probably the only school you have left that doesn't have central air. It would look at putting mechanicals in for central air. Then you'd look at a demographer report and determine whether or not the school needs an addition. Does it not need an addition? If it needs an addition, where does that addition go? Cause that's also going to tie into having a new roof and all the mechanicals.
Just as a timeline.
So we're kind of at a critical point in terms of needing a new roof in four to five years. Your point, Kate, how long it takes to get these things off the ground. So, but it end, it's, look, there's the money component of it. Then there's the resource people component of it. Then there's the volunteerism component of it, you know, when you have to put together another building committee. So let's leave it at that, that we'll look forward to hear from the board in short order on an agenda item, kind of next steps with middle sex.
I just mentioned that the, 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 I say classroom was also deferred because the foundation paid for the, the schematic, but it wasn't going to be able to be done. It's probably a huge amount of money. So, so they, they.
We're going, we'll talk through that. Let's go on. Seven A.
This is Dave, thank you for finding us. That's the place, this is where that's going to reside between Aspen and power school or any other system right there.
Anything else on seven eight? Michelle, can you scroll up just a little bit? Is that feasible? There you go.
Do we mean a cohesive district response or coherent district response? I would hope that all of our responses are coherent.
Where are you looking?
Well, so would I, Julie. I'm not just going to.
Where, where are you looking?
The bottom of the page there, the yellow, I don't know if that's blank language.
Because, because yes. I, I think it's bingo, I guess. But, but.
Yeah.
So I know we're in evaluation, so we have a ways to go on Aspen. But I guess as I'm thinking forward to what's going on with Edge Planet, what Aspen does in terms of student records and other systems that are out there, say a blackboard or a canvas or something like that. That's actually going to do some of the other things beyond just managing student record. So is this kind of server? I'd love to see any efficiencies or any interaction or any interoperability between the various systems that are coming down and any savings we can get as we work through that. And of course, anything that we can do or develop or give to teachers that makes their time freed up from tedious tasks to give them more chances to interact with students one-on-one. You know, I think it's a great goal to have in mind to look through these systems.
You, you might say this is crazy, but I, I think Dave's thought process, correct me, Dave, if I'm wrong, but you know, you got Eduplan, you got Aspen, you got various other systems out there. Do they all talk to each other? Do they need to talk to each other? Should they talk to each other? And how does that create efficiencies?
So Power School specifically does connect a lot with a lot of the software systems we use now. So like Snap, for example, or reverse transfer bussing. There's a very strong connection between the two where the, the two can just kind of port the data back and forth. I don't specifically know anything about Edge Planet, so I'll leave that one out. But it is a more expensive system than Aspen.
Okay. But I think just as you go through the process, I think today's point is like, we can't have all these standalone systems. We've got to understand how do they integrate for the teacher's experience? And to Dave's point, how do they free up the teacher for student time? Good. All right. Anything else here on seven A? Jill?
Yeah, I don't know that there is any Dave's point of evaluating what types of technology would release teacher time is not actually noted here. So if that's, if that's an area of strategic work, we want, we need to note it.
Katie.
Thank you. I might have, should have brought this up in before, but David's comments about freeing up teachers and maximizing their time to be in front of students just made me think that, that, that conversation about technology, I would also hope that we can apply to the lens of professional development as well. All right, really being conscious of what we are pulling teachers out and making sure that, that it is a good use of their time. Because it's a big deal to pull a teacher from, from their students. So I would hope that we continue to evaluate that as well.
Good, thank you. Anything else on seven A?
Yeah, that we just added in, we just added in the policy review for technology devices to revisit that.
Julie, do we have anything coming out of comms about that we're ready? We talked, for example, about website or we talked about, I think we may not be ready to articulate anything specific, but do you want to note? You want a placeholder?
We could definitely say that we think we need to look at our website and how to optimize it and improve the user interface. I don't necessarily, I mean, sooner than later would be ideal. I'm not sure what kind of resources it takes. I, I personally would think it's something that requires outside resources. I think we're looking for a level of sophistication that we haven't been able to achieve internally so far. So, but no, I think that would be a great add to get something in there about evaluating and looking to improve.
Then also in the comms survey, we looked at the different, we harvested data, March right on all the different platforms and how people like them and don't. So I don't know exactly between the website and some of that. I don't know exactly how we want to word it, but I think there's something in there about taking a look at technology through a communications lens and seeing where we can improve in big and small ways.
So you're pulling, you're pulling the website out, we're sort of pulling that, which is okay. You're pulling that out of the data that we have heard from the communications and survey already. And so that's okay to do. That's what, like, the board wants to do and expedite that, but.
Maybe the request is that you go back and just look at that data that we harvested on with a comms lens.
I would agree with that outcome. I'm not saying I disagree with the outcome. I totally agree. It's just the way you want it in here and that.
I do, I, I think it's, I think it deserves to be pulled out. And I think that the commentary and the, what we've heard over and over again is clear enough that it does need work. Like lunch prepay or any of those other things that we asked questions about. I don't think we got such clear feedback, but we, we lean heavily on our website and it's, it's definite. It's, it's a critical vehicle for us and it's definitely not working as hard or as, as well as it could for us.
Well, just even when I've gone in to look up people or look up something, it's, there's no consistency from school to school.
There's a ton of information, which is great.
Right.
But it's, and, and it's important. It has to be there because we have to make this information available, but it's very difficult to access. It's hard to navigate. And e- even the search function, which is what I usually start with when I'm looking for something is, is, it's clunky. And I, I think that that's what we heard from the public as well, from staff, I think, and, and parents, the community.
So are you saying to break, break out the work specific to the web, the, the district and the individual school websites?
I, I think the district website, well, that's where I'm starting from is the district website. I think a lot of the individual school websites, when it gets into the nitty gritty, probably feeds into the district website. So I think the district website deserves a, a look and consideration for some improvements, enhancements.
And again, I would look at that from what, what resources do you need to accomplish that? I don't expect necessarily that to be done internally.
No, that's what I'm saying. I think it needs to be sourced from.
Okay.
We good with that?
Yep. Good.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I thank you for the board's deliberation on that and reflections and feedback that you've provided the last couple of meetings. So from here, we bring this back to the next meeting, hopefully.
Okay.
That's, I'll just say that's, that's a, that's a, that's a deep dive like in the last couple of, which is helpful, right? So.
Yeah. It was good. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. That's fine. Yep. So just in the interest of time and some hard stops that we have in getting to the last part. So we've got further discussion on department chairs, further discussion on participation fees, presentation on anonymous alerts, which I think is important for Alan to give a high level overview of that. And then we have some contract updates. So when we were talking about the agenda, I want to see if the board is looking for any additional information on the department chairs at this point in time, or I want to move forward with, we've got an update. We've had all our questions answered. Is there anything else we need answered? But I want to move on from the department chair conversation. The one thing that I would say that has been asked of me by the administration is if a department chair moves into a new role, are we going to backfill that department chair? And I would say yes, because we haven't made any decisions on the department chair otherwise. So if one leaves, you would backfill it. So does anyone want any further conversation or need any additional information at this point in time around department chairs?
Primarily what was updated was a organizational chart.
Yes, appreciate that.
Further detail on the special education department chair. That was what was added.
Okay. Good. You can speak on that.
So, so sorry, you're right. So in terms of moving on, what does that mean at that stage? I think things that were on the table, where are we looking for the department chairs? For example, to make another class, to take a class on. I assume that we are, I, I don't believe that anyone's interested in that, but you know, is the board ready to opine on that? Are we looking to restructure that role at all? Yes or no? Cause I think the idea was to kind of do this work through the summer so that when we get to the budget season, we've, we've, we're clear on what our structure looks like for this role.
Katie.
I would actually pull back from that and say that my understanding of the general board sentiment, or at least certainly mine, was that we have a new assistant superintendent of curriculum and that it would be silly of us to make changes before she's even had a chance to be here during the year. So my view is that we don't, we don't, we don't talk about this again until we hear from her.
Thank you for your opinion. Any other thoughts, process? Yes.
Just to clarify, I know one of the kind of ideas was the potential to restructure the role to that one classers or, you know, role. But from what I understand, we've heard that that would be logistically impossible and would not result in any kind of fiscal savings. Is that correct?
Nothing's impossible if you told us to do it, but we would end up with a bunch of part-time teaching positions, which we more than likely in this climate would have a very hard time filling. Cause people, there are full-time positions in all the other districts. So that's one of the roadblocks right now.
Okay, fair enough. Julie.
I was just going to add that the only, if I could call it an outstanding question I had was about teacher evaluations and oversight. And I feel like we've had good discussion around that. And it sounds like there's, there are great systems in place and there's good work being done to optimize that. And that to me is, is all that needs to be addressed. So with that, I'm, I'm fine.
So I, I appreciate all the questions that have come out of the board around this role. And I think they're important questions and I thank the administration for all the work that was done around it. And if there are any other questions we want to answer, but I think, you know, for right now, someone leaves that role, that role gets filled. I think Katie brings up a good point and, and Amy, I would ask that when you feel you're at a point where you've reviewed the role, you've listened to us, you can go back and look at our discussions around department chairs and you want to bring an update to us with any recommendations, any thoughts, I think that would be appreciated. Because again, I think, you know, broadly thinking, you know, we've invested a lot in administration in those type of roles. And, and they've been brought to us and, you know, there's been good justification around it. I think sometimes we, we want to see more results, you know, and we use the word metrics a lot. But, you know, I'm comfortable with where we are right now. Again, I want to make sure that roles and responsibilities are identified and understood. But I'd like to hear from you when you feel you're comfortable and have done your assessment. It's not to say down the road that the board can't bring up the discussion again as it, as has been done in the past, but that's kind of, that's kind of where I am with the role. I will tell you, the other thing is just that we have to think about this, you know, as a board. But, you know, conversations like this lead to morale issues in terms of these folks wondering, do I have a job? Don't I have a job? Where's the board going with this? So I think, well, everyone should understand, we continue to look for efficiencies. We continue to look for the best way to deliver education for our students. At this point in time, we've gotten the information, we've asked the questions. I think we understand where we are. There's some more follow-up to do, but from a, from a department chair standpoint, please continue to do what you're doing. We appreciate you participating in the, in the information session, coming to the board and presenting. And thank you for all that information as department chairs. And I think you understand where we're coming from in terms of what we're looking for the role. But let's, let's go forward with the role right now. But no, always understand that as a board, as an administration, we're just always looking for better ways to do things to deliver education. And, but I want to make sure they understand, you know, they need to move forward with their role. And some of them, you know, may look for other opportunities, but for right now, we'll, we'll keep the role in place. And if anyone so chooses to move out of that role, we'll, we'll fill that role. Does that make sense? Okay.
I, I, just if I could comment, I really appreciate the grace and the gift of time to learn a little bit more. I'm familiar with similar models in other districts, not only from my previous district, but from my colleagues throughout the state. It is a model that generally I know does work very well. And especially when we think about implementing action within the strategic plan. But it will take me a bit of time to learn how the current role is implemented here in district. And I think clarification of roles and responsibilities is a great place to start.
Great.
And I'll really look forward to working together with that team and Dr. Adley and my colleagues to, to keep, to bring an update to the board in time.
I think you've heard enough to understand where we're coming from, but I also think we're at a point now where we've got a lot of good information. But I think your timing is perfect in that you'll bring a good fresh set of eyes to us to continue to, yeah. Good, thank you. All right, thank you very much from a board perspective. I think it's been an important conversation. So, you know, from an agenda standpoint, Dr. Adley reached out to FCAC or CIC, who is it? CIC. CIC. They were going to do a study for us. They have done that. They just were not able to come to the meeting. So I know we've wanted to discuss and some board members have wanted to talk about participation fees. I kept it on there. There's no real information behind this right now. So stuff Rich has presented to the finance committee. But is there anything at a high level that the board is looking for to continue this discussion prior to getting some information from the CIC? What is it? I'm sorry.
CIAC.
CIAC. Thank you. Chris is laughing there. I'm bad with acronyms. So, you know, I always think of these things, it's great to talk about participation fees, but what, what's the goal with participation fee? And, you know, we've got students that don't participate in anything. We've got a lot of participation in sports. We've got a phenomenal theater program. We've got a phenomenal music program, got phenomenal art programs and clubs and councils. So is there anything at the top of the house from a board perspective we want to talk about prior to seeing some of that information that's coming our way? Are we good at that? Yeah, John.
Yeah, and I don't want to dwell on this too.
No.
Cause I think, I think you guys hit it that I think we need to see the broader study, but good. And, and that's kind of conclusion. I think we came in our, our finance committee, gave Rich some other things to, that we'd like to see. I think it was good for the context of some of the questions that we see. And, you know, when you look at a higher level, it's, it, it does go back to fairness in terms of our district relative to others in terms of some of the fees that the parents are, are, you know, footing for like ice hockey, if you, if you will. So I think in the broader scope of a discussion, this is going to be very helpful. very helpful. But I think looking at it alone right now.
Good. Makes sense.
It's gonna spin our wheels.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure we, we did the right thing from a board perspective. So I appreciate that. Thank you, John. Good. So quickly, we will move on to presentation of anonymous alerts, Dr. Adley and Mr. Gregory Bender. Thanks, Michelle.
Is Mr. Bender here, bring him to us?
Alan, if we could keep this at a high level.
I will.
We have to come back to it. We will. I want to respect everyone's time and some of the other stuff we have to accomplish. And it's time for Brandon.
Greg, good evening, or good afternoon, sir.
Hi, Greg.
Thank you for joining us. Greg, we've been here. The board has been here from nine o'clock. We're running a wee bit late. So I'm going to put you on the speed date and thing with Alan's speed date too, right? And you'll do the same thing to try and work through this, not to pit any injustice, but we're going to try and move through the concept. I appreciate you, sir, being here today. And also you've been, you've come to the table anytime I've wanted you to come to the table the last couple of months, to do staff training and everything else. So I appreciate your availability. I'll talk real quickly here. You may recall that our director of security, Leon Kolotaiuskay, had suggested that we potentially look into other opportunities, software opportunities for essentially keeping people safe, get it safe, right? So we, we looked at a couple of pieces of software too in particular, which were Sandy Hook Promise Say Something and this anonymous alert. There was administrators from all the buildings. There was the director of mental health on it. And essentially, we're looking at a self-reporting system, just cutting to the checks here, where parents and staff and students can self-report. We always encourage in person, but there are times where kids are maybe not connected, right? And don't feel comfortable. And this particular piece of software lets students report on a number of issues. We have narrowed it down because we, the priority for us was to keep our kids safe. So if students are going to harm themselves or each other, or there is a threat that someone hears or otherwise to the building, or there's a major bullying, major bullying incident or otherwise, those are the main three reasons that we'll be looking to use this system for. So it's, it's a self-reporting system where students use an app to report. It is, it can be used in K through 12. We're not going to use it in elementary school. We're going to wait and see how this looks. We're not going to roll it out until all the communication is lined up. But given the significance of it and the profile of it and the topical nature of it, I thought we'd bring it to the board, just A for your reflection and also just to praise you also kind of where we are with it. So that's the, that's the, that's the tenet of it. And, and we could probably just go from your questions. We'll probably, you'll get, get everything else entered. Did you bring it just a wee clip or something?
Just about four slides, six slides, something like that, just to give a brief overview.
Just whip through them as quickly as you can.
Will do.
Thank you.
Would, we work with 9,000 schools nationwide, as well as Canada and three other continents as well. And what anonymous alerts provides is an anonymous way for students to come forward when they don't feel comfortable to come forward to an administrator. So one of our, let me see if I can put this. So we work with quite a few districts in Connecticut already and have been working with Newark Public Schools for about four years plus now. And we, we help school districts uncover things that students wouldn't normally come forward to report. So 60% of all students nationwide, this is Secret Service and also Homeland Security, would not come forward to report sensitive issues if they do not have an anonymous way to do so. So we help schools, school boards mitigate risk, come forward with students where they can anonymously report some of those issues where they don't feel safe coming to a counselor or particular, you know, principal about a specific issue. And old school ways of submitting those types of reports were like the lockbox in front of this, you know, principal's office. And what we also provide is a wonderful two-way conversation with administrators. When a student reports something, they can also have a two-way conversation with that administrator. So some of the benefits are, you know, quick reporting, two-way chats with the trusted administrator as well, helping resources section for social emotional learning content, which we're currently popular as well, and incident management of those particular incidents. Also, routing to the specific people that are responsible in those specific school buildings. Let's see if this works. So students can also report on any type of device as well. Well, they can bring their own devices to school, or they can report through the, you know, computer libraries, you know, computer station at the library, district issued devices as well. So whether that's an Apple on Android, a Chromebook or a computer, they can port through those various means and methods as well. So on the mobile application, it's very simple for a student to report. They just click the red button to report something. They can report it. It's 100% anonymous, helping resources, also contact immediately 911, should it be a possible sensitive cell phone harm incident with a student as well. And that's how the app, app looks either on Android or on specific devices like iOS, whether that's an iPhone or an iPad as well. They can select the submitter type, who they are, placing that report anonymously, whether the student, the parent, or a staff member as well. Click, report it, send it directly to that school building as well. And they can also click the bottom button there, not remain anonymous as well. So they have the opportunity to come forward both anonymously or not anonymously as well. And let's see if this. This is the social emotional helping resources section. We're working with Dr. Adley and his whole team on right now, and Leon to populate with different types of resources for students. So if they don't feel comfortable coming forward, they have different types of resources available to them as well. And then on the management side, there's, I'm clicking too far. There's various ways for that administrator to both communicate, manage it on a device, whether that's on an iPhone, iPad, or their computer at school, whether that's a laptop, full accountability, reporting, and also trackability as well.
You must have gone through four or five slides.
Yeah. I'll try to do it as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I know. Everybody wants to probably get home for dinner at some point.
That one too, people need to be. So one of the other things that the administrators to start this off, there's ours that are put on like web when the students can use this. And we don't want ministers like one o'clock in the morning and so on and so forth. So it basically is from.
Says here, seven to five, Monday through Friday.
Right there. Okay.
School days.
Yeah.
If students choose another time, it'll come up like, if this is an emergency, you need to call 911 or these other numbers.
So I guess, Dr. Adley, is, I like this, you know, from what I've read and, you know, what, what you've said, I guess, how does this fit into the overall plan? And how does our director of mental health and how does it fit into the overall plan of how we're helping students? Is it just another, it's another tool in the toolbox? Sounds kind of cold to say that, you know, when we're talking about some of the stuff and helping students, but you know what I mean? Like, is this, like, I think we've talked about, what does a strategic plan look like in how we're helping students and giving them the tools that they need? Is this, this is a piece of it in that?
Yes. And then it came from, first of all, the director of security who put it in his plan. And that was reflected in his plan that we'd be exploring these opportunities. And it's, it's an opportunity for our young people to reach out and to care for themselves and others, if they still need to do that. Have you used a system like this before and other people have? You might think that, well, are people not just going to, kids going to just mess around with it? You know, students rise to the expectations that you set them. They don't go around pulling alarm systems and fire alarms. They understand the, the significance of those things. And any minor, any sort of situations like I generally are minor in nature and sort of play a little bit. They understand they care for each other. They understand of, of what, what it means to make a complaint or a concern or notify us of either somebody's going to hurt themselves, there's a, there's a threat, there's somebody or somebody's getting severely bullied or otherwise, right?
So working, working with Leon, Dr. Dad is in agreement with this as part of a tool.
She, she was a part of the whole process of reviewing both, both apps, the Sandy Hook Promise one and this one. And the major difference was the service and the turnaround and the ability to get this done with the company who's right next door in Stanford.
And this is not, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I live in North Stanford as well.
Good. And this is not.
Our teams are in White Plains, New York.
Great. Thank you. This not, does not play into if there's a threat or a lockdown at a school, this is not used to communicate out to parents. This is more of a communicate in.
This is an internal, yes.
Internal. Okay, good. Sorry, John.
You, you kind of touched upon that. We had the tip line a few years ago. And that was, you know, abused, if you will. I mean, that's the wrong word, but, you know, people would call in and bust up parties. So I guess I just worry about that aspect, but I also understand the value. So, you know, I guess if it rolls out and it's misused too often, you'll pull it back or take out some of the reporting mechanisms.
Well, we didn't, we completely limited this. The reason why we were actually looking at it all was for student safety. That was purely right. And, and we don't expect to use it for other reasons at the moment. I think the rollout of this, working with parents and understanding that, working with students and understand, you can't just rule this out and say, hey, like, load this up. So we'll, we'll do that rollout thoughtfully and opportunities for parents and explain to them so that when they're sitting around at the kitchen table, they can have a discussion about how it should.
So Julie, I think this falls into like, how do we communicate this type of stuff? You know, and how does this play into, you know, we've added another level of security at the elementary schools, SSOs, we've got the SROs, the high school and the middle school, you know, where we've got Dr. Dad, we've got a wellness center. Like, how, how does this fit into, you know, what we're trying to do to help our students feel safe, help them feel like they have a way to communicate, not just to an individual, which is always the best way, but, you know, through something they're very familiar with, an iPhone or a device. So.
It'd be nice co-communication from security and Dr. Dad, mental health. It would be, I mean, I see this as a, as another tool available to students. Some kids, you know, are comfortable telling, telling their parent, I'm worried about so-and-so, or, you know, I'm having my own issues. Some people will call 988 or 211 or whatever they'll call. And some people will use an anonymous app. I think, you know, hopefully it won't get a ton of traffic, but hopefully it'll get used when needed. Do the students know what administrator they're contacting? Is that anonymous also?
Yes, that's anonymous, yes.
Okay. So it's not like I'm going to have fun because I know Ms. Dunn is on this evening and I'm going to text her all night long.
One of the questions that our administrators had, because they're, when, when something comes across their desk, they are terrific at disseminating, like you're taking us, I'm taking us, of how to do that using this app. So it's important that, that's something that they want to make, make sure that something's got lost in the cracks and who's, who's working on this right away and so on and so forth.
And that would be my other question too. What, there will be different categories of, of notifications or whatever, I would imagine, reports, like, and one might be, I heard that there's going to be a prank at the high school tonight. How do you handle that versus a situation where, you know, you're being alerted that a student is in crisis or do we triage the response or how, and who has to make those difficult?
So there are, there are different, there are different, there are different categories. So not every category is going to be open for reporting. So I say there, is there a threat to the school? Is this a self-harm or reporting for someone else? Or is this a bullying case? They're not going to be able to report eventually or otherwise, you, you, you can clearly create a category for that, right? We're not explicitly opening for, for those particular reasons. Right away, we're looking at the safety of our students. It's, it's critical that the parents don't see this as, oh, you just put security guards in with guns. Now you're doing this, right? This is a supportive, helpful tool.
To your point of how it needs to be rolled out, Julie, in conjunction with our overall safety plan for students.
Yeah.
Health and wellbeing, you know, I think is kind of the topic. So.
With the marketing piece, back to students and back to community, it's very important.
Yeah. So Alan, I think at a high level, this year says K through 12, but that's not your recommendation?
No, the recommendation is for six through 12 to start with.
Six through 12. All right. And then I might've missed this. I apologize. So who's monitoring this? Our own staff is taking turns, the administrators through the day?
Yes.
And in what increments are they monitoring this? Are they on for an hour, two hours?
No, it comes right, right away.
So this goes, this would go to all administrators? Someone puts something in there, it goes to all administrators? And when you say administrators, do you mean all principals, all assistant principals, all administrative staff?
Yeah, how does the data?
Well, based on the incident type, it's routed to the correct person. That's some of the rapid pieces we've set up with Dr. Adley and Leon as well. And that can also be changed on fly as we roll.
So there are protocols as to what would go directly to maybe the police department versus what would go to a principal versus the superintendent?
Correct.
Okay.
And we thwarted, you know, two school shootings last year, one with kids coming forward, copycat incident down at Conroe, down in Texas and Houston area, right after the shooting in Tennessee. So things happen and we can help you mitigate those risks as well with, you know, students coming forward and saying, but somebody has credible threat or self-harm or something like that as well. And we've helped Greenwich Public Schools for years, high school, and they had a tremendous amount of issues, you know, about 10 years back, eight years back as well. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 not at all. Thank you.
And 98% of the reports coming through the system on a national level with 9,000 schools per credit. So less than two to three percent are non-credible incidents. And that's part of the rollout as well.
97% are correct.
Correct.
Just two quick questions.
Sure.
One for Dr. Adley and then this is for student use only, not parents?
We're permitting parents and students.
Parents and students, thank you. And then my question for you is actually the, the other side of the coin to, to people not taking it seriously. How do you ensure anonymity? I know that this has come up in our student population in other ways, you know, in terms of surveys and things that we've done, like, are they really tracking this? Am I going to get, how do you ensure that?
Well, one, the name of the brand is anonymous alerts. So it's an anonymous reporting system. Number two, it's based on rollout as well with students and entrusting those students with that information too. Part three is, it's an anonymous reporting system. It's a third-party system to the school district, which, you know, what brings belief and honesty into the system too for the students.
So you don't track IP addresses? There's no identifiable, you strip personally?
We strip everything out for that administrator receiving that report. So it's 100% anonymous. And that's where we get to trust. I mean, Newtown Public Schools has been with us for eight years now.
And then what type of, are there monthly management report that just at a high level, X amount of incidents reported, a breakdown of the type of incidences or?
You can run specific types of reports, pie charts, breakdown incidents by school building as well, what types of incidents are being reported by those students. So a lot of analytics in the systems as well.
Okay.
So very nice and easy to do.
Thank you.
If you just wanted to see all the bullying incidents in one school or over a period of time, you can do a date range on that too.
All right. Dave?
Just a quick follow-up to Jill's question. So you strip out any identifiable information that's provided to any of the people who get the reports? Does you guys maintain that information?
We, at, at the time that that report submitted, on our back end, we have an IP address that's associated with that report.
And how long do you maintain this?
In perpetuity until it's purged.
And what, if somebody wanted to request that data, what process would they follow?
They would just call our customer service line, send in their PIN number, identify themselves as being a secure person.
Thanks, Dave.
And then they can get that report back as well. So that, that, that's come up with various school districts throughout Connecticut as well. That, that, that's come up with various school districts throughout Connecticut as well, where we've supplied that for the specific incidents, where it's a self-harm incident, let's say.
Cost?
It's just a few thousand dollars because we're only doing the two schools.
Yeah, it's just only doing two schools.
Most one high school.
Right.
So it'd be in the superintendent's adjustments.
So it's not going to go, it won't go forward until the board hears more about a rollout, right? Like, we're not, until we've got everything set, we're not rolling anything out, and you'll know before, you know, there's the parental, but it's, it's obviously significant enough, topical enough, important enough topic here to present it.
And is this a contract?
Yes.
And what's the length of the contract?
It's more just a yearly contract.
Annual contract.
Annual contract.
Here again on the eighth.
Potentially, yes.
Is that the next?
Potentially, yes, but what would we hear next? What do you say?
I don't know. You just said you didn't want to move forward until you.
Oh, yes, just until, until we're ready with, this is what we're, this is the type of communication we want to do. We've got all our ducks lined up, all administrators have been trained, but we've got new administrators now, right? So we've got to do, do that again, and we've got to have all the communications done ready before we consider sending them out, so. For the rollout.
Yeah, Dave?
Oh, just back to the term, is it auto-renewal every year or we have to affirm it?
Within 90 days.
90 days prior to expert.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other board questions or thoughts? Anything else the board would like to see in terms of information at the next presentation, over and above, kind of rollout communication? Rich, I know you'll have this for us, but a few thousand dollars. So I'm expecting to see like.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make, make the point, this is the type of thing that the director can do, work and proactively on, and the Director of Mental Health, work and proactively together, that's one stuff that is just, sometimes it's difficult for us to get to these things.
Yeah, Julie.
It might be helpful when we, if we revisit this or when we revisit this, to hear just a few points from Dr. Dad and from Mr. Kolokowski. Sure. Like combined points on, on rec going.
I just, I just think from a public standpoint, I'd like to, I'd like to have them, you're more than welcome to come back, talk through how this is a piece, this is another tool. In the overall, I'll use the word toolbox that we have for our students and for our parents. So, you know, I, I think we have to continuously connect the dots on this stuff so that we come across as really trying to provide a holistic approach to our students and our staff's wellbeing. Jill?
While every district is different, I thought some of the information you had about your efficacy rates was valuable. You know, the percentage of unreliable claims and some things like that. So I think anything that talks about how this has been effective in other districts would be helpful, Alan, if you just, you guys could have a couple bullet points.
I think we're good. Mr. Bender, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do appreciate it.
Yeah, we may.
Because he's been available like.
Good, no, thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next two pieces of agenda items, should we go back into executive session for those two?
So the board is aware of the settlements because we gave the financial picture in executive session, the cafeteria workers. There are no language changes because there aren't enough employees. And so I think the language changes with the nurses are straightforward, so I don't know.
Is everyone comfortable with continuing the dialogue at the board table? Good. Thank you, Marge. So in order to keep moving, we'll move on to action on proposed contract agreement with Darian Registered Nurses Association, and I'll turn it over to Marge and Rich.
So the nurse's proposal is for 8.25% over three years, including anniversary increases, which are similar to staff, is 8.68. It's just over $84,000 over the three years. The insurance would tick up to 23% by the end of the contract, which mirrors the teacher's contract.
Questions or thoughts on the nurse's contract? Great. Rich, you want to move on to food service negotiations?
We're actually down to only five employees. That's one less than we had previously discussed with the board. It is a blended rate increase, which averages just over 3.3% over the course of the four years, or three years, excuse me. We have two cafeteria managers, which would be at 4% a year, and then three general workers at two and a quarter, or two and a half percent a year.
Good. Thoughts or questions on that? Then we'll move to motions on each. Sorry, I hear you, Jill. Went off track here, but, okay. Thank you. So we'll go back to the agenda item 12, action on proposed contract agreement with the Darian Registered Nurses Association. May have a motion to approve the proposed contract agreement with the Darian Registered Nurses Association. John Seeny, second by Julie Best. All those in favor, unanimous, those that are present. Do you need names, Jill? Good, thank you. Again, item 13, action on proposed contract agreement with the Darian Cafeteria Workers Union. Have a motion to approve the proposed contract agreement with the Darian Cafeteria Workers Union. Katie, second by Julie, all those in favor, everyone that is here and present. Thank you. We will move on then to possible appointments. Are we ready to move forward on appointments from our interviews this morning? Great. Anything we need to do, Marge, with our friends that are not on?
I think they're watching you.
They're watching on YouTube. All right, good, good.
Apologies, we can't do this live.
Yes, no, I appreciate that, John. So, you know, we appreciate, again, I'll go through these and then I'll, I'll make a quick comment. So we'll move on to agenda item 14, appointment of Middlesex Middle School Assistant Principal. May have a motion to appoint Felicia Bellows as the Assistant Principal of Middlesex Middle School. Katie, second by Julie, all those in favor. That is unanimous with everyone present. Thank you. Congratulations, Felicia. Very excited for you to join the Middlesex Middle School team over there, and thank you for spending some time with us this morning. So look forward to congratulating you in person. Agenda item 15, possible appointment of Darian High School Assistant Principal. May have a motion to appoint Allison Mullane as Assistant Principal of Darian High School. Julie, seconded by Dave, all those in favor. That is unanimous with everyone present. Allison, congratulations. Thank you for joining us this morning and taking our questions. We welcome you to the Darian School District and we welcome you to the Darian High School. So congratulations. We'll move on to agenda item 16, possible appointment of Royal Elementary School Assistant Principal. May have a motion to appoint Amanda Kearney as the Assistant Principal of Royal Elementary School. That motion is by Julie, second by Katie, all those in favor. That is in favor, Best, Bublin, Seeny, McCammon, Deneen. Any extensions? Any against abstain? Against, all right. So that move, that appointment moves forward. Thank you all. Amanda, congratulations. Welcome to the Darian School District and the Royal Elementary School family. Thank you for joining us this morning and speaking with us. So we look forward to welcoming you to the district. Agenda item 17, appointment of Oxbridge Elementary School Principal. I think we need to change this to the appointment of the interim Oxbridge Elementary School Principal. So may have a motion to appoint Melissa K. as the interim principal of the Oxbridge Elementary School for the 2023, 2024 school year. May have a motion. Dave Brown, second by Julie Best, all those in favor. That is unanimous with everyone present. Melissa, thank you for taking on the role. As I said previously, we thank Luke Fors Shaw for all that he has done. He's still involved in Connecticut education, so we hope to see him down the road. But Melissa, thank you for stepping up for a really important role as we open fully the new Oxbridge School. We're excited that you're joining us on an interim basis to continue the great traditions at Oxbridge, and thank you for spending time with us this morning. So Melissa, welcome to the, the Darian School District and to the Oxbridge Elementary School family. So look forward to congratulating you in person also. So. All right, good. With that said, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussion of the performance of the superintendent of schools pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1206A. Julie, second by John, all those in favor. That is unanimous with everyone here. So Michelle, tell me when we're, when we're clear.